At seven oh two P M. First item of business is roll call. We, Councilmember Ariaga and Councilmember Pinson are not here tonight and they contacted us and let us know that the reasons why. Can I get a motion to excuse the councilmembers not here? Yes. She wants to participate on the phone. Is she on, do we know? Okay, so let's keep in mind then that Councilmember Ariaga will not be here tonight and hopefully Councilmember Pinson will be able to call in and participate. So if I can get a motion excusing the Councilmember Ariaga. Okay, so the motion was made by Councilmember Grisher and seconded by Councilmember Gonzalez. Let's vote please. Amitya's yes?
Dennis, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, let's do a roll call for who's here. Amitya's here?
Dennis here.
Time for the invocation. Councilmember Gonzalez, would you do us the favor please?
Sir. Dear Lord, thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health. We need to fulfill our calling for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom that we enjoy in our lives. In the scriptures you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. We ask your guidance for this mayor, for this assembled council, and for the officials that govern this country. In addition, we pray for all the physicians, nurses, healthcare providers, police officers, firemen, EMS workers, and military that are involved in safeguarding this country against the sickness and turmoil that has befallen our country. May they be blessed with the wisdom and grace needed to provide the best care possible. It is in your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
Okay, next on the agenda, we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next we'll do the Texas flag pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas. One nation, one state over God, one indivisible. Next on the agenda is public hearing.
Mayor, this item is for the second public hearing on the strategic partnership agreement with the Alceson Municipal Utility District. The strategic.
Strategic partnership agreement is an action item on the agenda later this evening. This is the second public hearing we've had on this agreement. We had one in July and this is the second required one.
Anyone here to speak on this topic? Okay. So we close the public hearing? Do I need to make a motion here?
No, we're good.
Okay. Next on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anybody that signed up for public comments? We have one. If you would come up and speak please, just state your name and address and let's keep the public comments to three minutes please.
My name is Crystal Jackson. I live at one eight seventh Spence Lane, just outside of the city. Until recently, I was an employee of the police department and that's something that I'd like to be here to talk about today. Faithful to our values, surrounded by the principles of integrity, communication, transparency, and accountability, we went to earn the trust and respect of our community each and every day. I made many mistakes over my tenure career with the city of Elgin and the Elgin Police Department, but I always owned up to my mistakes. I learned from them and I was dedicated to teaching other dispatchers not to make those same mistakes. I held many roles at the PD and often took on assignments that did not necessarily fall under my purview. I did so because I was dedicated to the department and to the community I worked and lived in. On March twentieth, I was present when dispatch received two phone calls from Franklin and Robertson County complaining of one of our unmarked police cars driving recklessly and endangering citizens on wet roadways. During my IA investigation of those two phone calls being released to the concerned citizens of Elgin group and the community at large, Chief South wanted me to admit I made a mistake. I would not go against my beliefs and I did not admit to it a mistake because I did not make a mistake. Although I was still fired for it, I do offer this to Chief South. All anybody wants you to do is admit you made mistakes. You keep talking about accountability. Where is your accountability? This council has yet to hold him accountable for what, for his unbecoming conduct. Instead, they have pledged their support of City Manager Tom Mattis ignoring his conduct. That endorsement is a slap in the face of each and every single officer in this city that puts on that uniform and shows up eighty plus hours a week. Nights, weekends, and holidays. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Do we have anybody else? Okay. Let's go ahead and move on now to the city manager's report.
Mayor, this, the first item we have on the agenda is a quick review of our stormwater drainage projects that we've included in the five-year capital plan. A couple of meetings ago, we had had a discussion about a grant project that we were putting forward and there seemed to be some confusion on the staff's part about, about some projects that we have been pending for some time and projects that are included in the five-year plan and the prioritization of those projects. So we just wanted to take a minute tonight to have Bo come and run over the general status of, of some of these projects that have been around for a long time and what our plans are moving forward and to make sure we're on the same page with the council moving forward as we get ready to start up for the new five-year capital plan that will happen during the first quarter of 2021. So with that, I was gonna have Bo just, he's got a little presentation to make.
Hi, Council. So what I have shown up there is a figure back in 2016, council had determined about ten locations throughout the city that had what would be localized flooding issues to kind of start looking at those.
Projects to potentially put in a capital plan, some of them potentially city staff looking at addressing and completing the projects. And so that, the report was completed back in 2016. It was presented to council and at that point in time, we kind of go back to it if and when the city has opportunities for grant funding that incorporates or encompasses drainage projects. As Tom alluded to, as you can see on the map, there, project number three, which is the drainage ditch that's over there off of Kennedy Street, Brenham crosses two ninety. That project and that drainage area that it would encompass almost takes up that entire drainage area. And so that project always seems to kind of be submitted for some of the grant funding. It was for the most recent GLO funding to redo that particular area. The remaining nine projects, as you can kind of see that are highlighted on the map, it's very localized. None of them encompass an entire drainage area for the city. They're just very, some of them are just related to a singular street or a certain particular area. Doesn't, go ahead. Okay. So the.
It's too far away.
Yeah, yeah, and I wish I had printed out some now to give to you. So the giant green lime green area right there, the railroad tracks cut through the middle of it down there and that encompasses, there's Kennedy Street. Depot Avenue is right there off of the tip, right dead center in the page. That's where all the tracks come and crisscross. That's Depot Avenue. That's right smack in the middle. Area eight, that would be out by Taylor Lane. Area seven would kind of be there by Second Street around to Maple Lane and Hillside Drive. Area four, that's Austin Street right there along the top of area four. And area five is just right beneath it with the railroad tracks coming straight through the middle. Area one, that is over there, Willa Street. And then just south of that, that's kind of Avenue H. And then east Seventh Street kind of goes right there. And again, I can provide maps. I should have probably sent a PDF out for it. So, long story short is we went through, we did a drainage study, we came up with multiple ways to address the drainage issue, multiple costs based on what type of storm event the city wanted to invest in. If it was a twenty-five year event, fifty year event, a hundred year event, as you may know that your ordinances for any new development that comes in, they're required to deal with the hundred year event or the most adversely affected and to put in enough there to deal with it. The city on your projects, just because of cost and then if you're going back in your retrofitting infrastructure in some of the older parts of the town, you generally look at all the different storm events and then you make a determination of what's your rate of return because it's, it's coming out of the taxpayers' base out of that. It's not being paid for by a developer. So the projects have been laid out. When a grant comes up, we go back. Generally, a lot of the grants are based on community-wide benefit. And so, as you can see, just, this was more of a visualization of the areas and then you can kind of see the number of homes. It's hard to put the community-wide benefit to it as you apply for a lot of those grants. Some of these projects are, you know, as small as fifty thousand, hundred thousand dollar projects. Some of them are a little bit larger than that. And so it has never really been prioritized, I guess, by council to say, okay, we have this plan, we have all the preliminary engineering done, let's prioritize these projects to put them in a plan. You know, do we get a recommendation which one city forces can do and we prioritize it to be part of the maintenance schedule from city forces versus which ones you would actually go out for public bid with a contractor per se. And I, and I think that's kind of where we are right now. It's not a fact of, should they, they can definitely be in the five-year capital plan. It's really to get a consensus of which ones on this report that have already been done or if there are other specific areas. A small project which is right here that you guys probably saw that dealt with a localized flooding issue, that's Avenue B, where they put in the concrete channel down the entire street. And that was a small city-funded project that was done to deal with that one localized flooding issue. So if you haven't seen it before, it is South Avenue, it's Avenue B right here, two blocks over from council, no, north. And so that was a very small drainage project. A lot of these projects in here for the localized flooding are very similar, not necessarily the exact same thing we'd do to fix it, but along that type of magnitude.
So we do have, oh, I was gonna say, we already have for.
And Taylor Lane is.
For example, that are already been in the five-year capital plan for a couple of years, Taylor Lane, Brenham Central Phase Two.
Which, that's the one that we presented for the GLO grant most recently. And I think the central Brenham Street apportion was done. You guys did get fully funded by a grant project. There was a second component on Central Avenue that was not funded by that particular grant that where a lot of the engineering has already been done on it.
And Lexington Road is another one that, that's in there for stormwater drainage. But each one of these, but just an example of what I was talking about is, as you know, these, these three projects alone are, are over three million dollars for funding. So it's more an affordability issue, but, but that was the issue we discussed before with our grant project. So our, our general philosophy is to assess in virtually any grant application we make, what, what project, it's not necessarily what, what we'd like to do, but what project we think has the best chance to be funded. And likewise, until these projects are, are prioritized in the plan and, and, and the funding source is identified, we don't have a direction or understanding how to move forward. So, so in the future, if, as we get into the five-year plan, I don't think at this point that we're at now, since we'll be looking at a new five-year plan in the next three months or so, we could go through this process and revise the existing plan, but I think we might as well, it's probably more effective for us to just keep this in mind as the new plan comes about. And if council gives these top priority or close to the top, then, then that gives us staff the direction we need to go ahead and try to get the projects done.
So if I can ask you a question, Tom, just to catch up.
Sure.
These, these five, or you had five or six different.
There's ten total in this report.
There's ten up there?
There's ten different projects that are defined in this report.
Okay, and those were identified by, by council?
By council.
Okay, just not prioritized is what staff is saying.
But that's been some time ago.
That's been some time.
Twenty sixteen is when the report was finalized. So early twenty sixteen, council said these ten projects, specifically these flooding, Taylor Lane over there, the crossing, these specific areas, we want to study, we want to know recommendations to fix the issues and cost associated with that.
And do we, do we have one particular area that we know is pending that needs it worse that's agreed to by the council and by staff?
No.
So in other words, one could be just as vital as the other right now?
Yeah, they're kind of basically, again, these are, with the exception of area three, which everybody understands, you know, the drainage starts up here by City Hall and makes its way all the way down to two ninety. Most of these would be considered localized flooding, you know, not entire subdivisions, houses potentially, yes, definitely affected, road crossings affected in some cases, but they're very localized. So it's gonna be a very specific project for a very certain area. Very similar to like when we're talking about the traffic, it's a very localized issue to that specific area, not to necessarily the overall of the city.
So that's, that's the reason that three is so big?
Three is so big because it's more of a regional area. It's, it's a large drainage area.
And is it, is it probably the most costly improvement?
That is, that's the one that the city has put forth for grants most of the time because there's always a minimum threshold of dollars in, in area and everything usually has to be either community-wide benefit or contiguous from a project standpoint. So if I went out for a CBDG grant, I can't go find ten different areas all throughout the city and then try to combine it into one project and put it out. They, they frown upon that. So that's why three has come up, at least from a grant standpoint, usually at the top of the list because it's the most expensive out of this report that you can put in there.
If I could, I would say, Mary, you got on the point. The staff has identified these projects. All of them need to be done. What we haven't got with council on the same page about is what their priorities are. Typically, and I think what I like about this map is that almost you can go by the size of the colored area, right? The staff would typically be focused on who are we gonna serve the most for the money. But, but I think these localized, so the tough one is, these localized issues don't really meet that criteria of serving a lot of people and addressing a big problem. So that's where we need some help from council to understand what the priorities are.
And I think these projects are in different wards. At the time, council came and said, okay, these are our number one areas and this is what came. You can see the newer parts of town, you don't see a lot of the quote-unquote localized flooding issues a lot because of, those are designed to a much different standard than some of the existing parts of Elgin. So you would, you wouldn't expect to see a bunch out on County Line Road and stuff like that as the newer subdivision, within the subdivisions go in.
And too, remember in 2016, that was when we had records that.
Yes.
So we could really see the effect. So that was the other part of that. That's where we all had, in all of our different wards, where we received phone calls, come look, I've got, we've got roads shut down, we've got watering houses, and that was the majority of what we looked at there. But I do have one other question. When we visited this before, just a little while ago, the other thing that we discussed is for these projects to be ready to go, could we make them that way? Because right now, we have that. Can we, can we get them to where we're ready to turn them over to any funding source and say, here's our plan, here's what it's gonna take? Because we don't have that.
Right. Yeah, that's a good point. This, this is how we structure the five-year plan, as you'll see at the bottom here, is look over a period of years. We have the funding, what the whole project's gonna cost, in this case, the two point three million, but you could set aside funding for the engineering in one year and, and move towards it that way. And so you're right, not every one of these projects is ready to go tomorrow if somebody drops three million dollars on us. So, so that's definitely the first step that we could invest in is.
No, I thought it was said that the engineering was already done for these.
The, the preliminary engineering to basically give you everything that's there, the detailed design, if you were to hire a contractor, that portion's not done. And then as Tom and I have kind of, as the city staff has grown and gotten more robust about, you know, being able to potentially do projects in-house and stuff like that, that would be something you'd still need to hand them a set of plans and say, go, this is how you fix the problem. But that hasn't been done because when we were sitting here in 2016, the staffing wasn't where it is today or the equipment isn't where it was today. So that would probably be one of the first questions, Tom, is to sit back down with the utility staff and say, here's the projects. What, what's in our capabilities that even city staff could plan out doing in the course of a year from a maintenance standpoint?
That's a good point. We, we haven't been in position to even think about that in the past. And so, yeah, just to clarify, I meant construction plans when the preliminary engineering's done, but to have it shovel-ready, we've gotta do more work on that.
That's a good question. So, so from the council, as I understand it, you're looking for, I'm sorry, you're looking for the council to prioritize these, these.
Yeah, as I said, I'm, I'm really just, wanted to make sure we'd start this conversation that after the first year and, and when we start to get into the five-year plan, that's, I thought the question was, when are these projects starting? They've been on the books forever, what are we doing? And so we need to take it to that next step to say which ones first, come up with funding plans, talk about, are there, is some of this work can we do now in-house and all of those things? So it's, it's really moving it beyond the preliminary and engineering to, to a real action plan. And so we'll just, we, like I said, I thought there was a little confusion last time we talked about it, so we're just trying to move the ball forward on that conversation.
There was. It wasn't confusion, I was really frustrated because we had a Taylor Lane project that had been there since 2016, but then in comes this two ninety-one that we have never talked about and said, yeah, this one we need to put bomb. And so I didn't really want. And then do we need to, and I understand now, we may have proved that, but.
A grant, a grant, not a bomb. Okay, I'm sorry. So, yeah, no, it's no real action necessary tonight, Mayor, just, just wanted to clear the air about the other conversations, try to move forward. The only other thing, Bo, I think we should add since we're having this conversation, is some of these localized problems, as we saw down there on the south end of town. What's the street? I can't think of it. No. The point is.
Over there by Cleveland Street.
All of these, all, all of these localized, not all of them, but some of these localized flooding problems are also, to fix them, we're gonna need cooperation of private landowners. That, that, the city, if you remember, we had the one scenario where the city could have done our whole project and it really wouldn't improve things because of the flooding, the cooperation we need from adjacent property owners. So that'll be in the mix too. We're gonna have to get people to meet us halfway and on some of these issues because they go into private property and not really on, on city property. So unless there weren't any further questions, this is more of, more to come when we get into the five-year plan. Thanks, Bo. The next item under, you want to keep going, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Next item on the manager's report is just a follow-up on our conversation last time about neighborhood traffic and safety upgrades. We, we had a, a meeting last week, a public meeting where we had a few residents from the areas come in and got some input from them and reviewed these projects. Basically, this, we need, we're to the point now where we'll need further guidance from the council about what to do or not to do on any of these projects. I think the staff has done what we can do to this point and we'll just kind of wait direction. So I don't, again, I'm not necessarily expecting action tonight, just wanted to make sure there aren't, there's no need for any more information to be generated by staff and, and I assume we'll circle back to this after the first year.
Is the council comfortable with that? As opposed to, I mean, not, in dealing with the fact that we had the public meeting last week and their comments? Anybody want to make any questions or comments about this right now?
I thought we had a good public hearing last week. I mean, ideally, we would have had more people come out. I don't know, Tom, since Thursday, if anyone reached out to the city with just additional comments about the areas, but for the most part, I thought it was well organized and gathered enough information. I, I think the one thing that they'll probably be interested in is just timely action. I realize it can't happen tomorrow, but I think that for the most part, it seems like a lot of these options we talked about, most of them are doable and within means. So it's just a matter of solidifying exactly what we want to do and moving ahead. Right? I mean, has anything.
If we're gonna do anything, what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
And, and, and then, as I said, in, I'm sorry, we done it.
Yeah.
It, the key to all four of these projects is, is unlike the other, what we were just talking about, these are all things that we think we can do in-house. So it really is, won't be a matter of plans or bidding or anything like that. We really just need to come together about which ones, if any of them, we're gonna do and, and when we're gonna do them.
Yeah, and I think for the most part too, because they involve safety, that's probably a reason for us to really put force some of these things. In fact, based on some of the comments, I'm just wondering if staff comes back with final recommendations by Bo. I mean, he's the expert, so based on what the comments were and what some of the limitations might be, and especially the areas where folks weren't quite sure, you know, blocking off certain areas seems about half and half. But I'm wondering, just based on input, if we can get final feedback based on that and then a final recommendations that council can look at, further assess, is that maybe the best? Or are we looking at coming back in January and having the same conversation about what do we do?
We can do that. I, I guess I would say, well, well, let's look at that, but I would say, these aren't far from what our final recommendation will be.
Right, okay.
Given the context of what we're trying to address. Given the context of what we're trying to address and what we're talking about. So, if, if, if the direction changes as to, we want to focus on this thing more than something else, then our recommendation, what to do, might change. But, but we'll do that. But actually, I don't, I wouldn't anticipate what we've proposed to change much as far as our idea of what can be done.
Yeah. And lastly, I'm just wondering, Mayor, if you have any more comments or for us, since I know you were also present on Thursday.
I would think that as the council, we should look at each one of these four. And I agree with Councilmember Begnaud, we don't want to just be talking about this forever. But at the same time, I don't think we've agreed to anything. So, until the council gets together and, in my opinion, gives Beau what we want done, and then Beau can get down and see if that's possible. Beau?
I'll tell you what I kind of need from you guys, and then how we can come back. So, if we were to just take the one that's up, for example, right now, what I would be looking for council to come back is, this is what we want to limit. So, we want to leave it full access as it is today, but we want to limit truck traffic through this intersection and to try to make it safer from a stop sign, and we want Ramirez to stay two-way. That would give me my marching orders to say, this is the best proposition I can. Or council to come back and say, we do want to close off 1704 from Ramirez, but leave Ramirez two-way or one-way. That is the type of interpretation I need from council from a direction. And then I can come back and say, per code, per what you have to do, this is, this is what it would be. Similar like Brenham, not Brenham, but over there off of Hillside, Old McDade and Brenham Street. If council's decision is, we have to keep a left turn on Brenham no matter what, you know, and the different option was shown, that is the instruction I need to receive from council. You know, we need to make it safer, but we have to make sure that there's a left turn from Brenham. And then that helps give me my bookends to where I can basically come in and say, this is the safe plan that meets MUTCD code for you guys to then be able to take action.
Yeah, I appreciate that, you giving us that feedback, though. I felt like that we left the meeting the other day with some actionable items. And I don't know if you had any takeaways that you were going to go work on, but it may be premature to do that until you really know, you know, what direction to go on those things.
I think we could chase ourselves around in circles. It, I don't want it to come to Mr. Engineer and give us 20 different options to choose from, and then we're going to try to pick the one that receives the most vote. I think you guys are at the point of council saying, we know what the impacts could be, we've heard the feedback from the residents, we're going to make a decision, if it be permanent or temporary. This is the ultimate goal for today of what we want to do at each of these intersections. And then I can give you something that meets standards and codes and what still falls in the realm of something city staff can do that you guys can move forward with.
So, Mayor, and I guess the council, you know, what, what then would be our approach on this? Because we can't sit in a council meeting where we have other business to take care of and wrangle through all of this stuff. And it's going to take some wrangling through. I'm thinking, do we have a workshop that we look at these each separately, or?
I think what we need to end up doing is each council member has to address the four situations and, and in written form, say, this is what I think we need to get done here to address whatever the, the topic is, whether it's Ramirez Road or whatever. If we have everything in writing and each council member has everything in writing, then we can say, oh, look, five of the six agree this is where we want to go. Or, all of us agree, or everybody has a different opinion, you know, whatever the case is. But if we don't put something down in writing where all of us can say, can sit there and look at it, I don't think we're going to go any, any, I agree that we're just going to be chasing each other around. So, how about, how about, can we, go ahead, Tom, can we?
Oh, no, I was just going to, I think you're right, Mayor. I was going to suggest, again, keep in mind that all four of these scenarios are based on feedback we got from people saying, here's the problem or what I'd like to see here. So, that's what we came up with. So, I think you're right. I, I might rather than, this could turn into an hour-long discussion in a council meeting, if everybody individually would submit their comments to the mayor or I in writing, and then he and I could assemble those and figure out. And really, all you need to say is go to each one of these and say, well, here's what I think. We want the traffic to go slower, like Beau said. I don't want the street one-way. Just, you only have to make a few comments and then we can collate those together. And I think, I think we could figure out where the majority is on each one and do that, and then bring that back as one action item later.
So, what?
Mayor and I both were in that meeting, we were just watching.
Okay.
We were in quarantine. So, we both, we were talking, so we were already watching. So, I pretty much had my ideas of the way I'd like it to go, so.
So, can we, can we just go ahead and task the council and say, hey, in two weeks, have everything into the city manager and then myself? And then we'll, we may find that we may be more in agreement than what we think we are on some of these, one of these four projects.
So, two weeks, is that by end of December? Do we just want to set a definite deadline?
Yeah, let's set by the end of December. And then we'll address it, if not the first meeting in January, we'll certainly address it in January. Everybody comfortable with that?
Just keep in mind, don't do reply all. You need to individually just send them to the mayor or I or both of us. But we don't want to get in an email conversation. Okay, that's good. I'm good on that. Mayor, the next item under manager's report was just kind of a reminder that we've, that we have the boards and commissions appointments coming up on January 5th. We've, I think collectively, made a little bit of effort this year in encouraging appointees. And we've gotten, I think, a better response than we have in prior years. You've been provided copies of all of those applications we have. And I think actually, Amelia got two more today that she left you hard copies at your places for two more. We've established, in accordance with the ordinance, the city secretary has established December 30th as the deadline for applications for these boards and commissions. So, it's kind of a holiday week. We need to have them in early so we can have them queued up for the meeting on January 5th. Just want to make sure anybody has any final questions before this appears on the agenda. That's correct. That's correct. Well, TERS and, and as you know, same with the EDC board, and there's two reps on there of council, but obviously, those have to be council members. So, but we'll be talking about them the same night.
So, let me get myself straight on this. Since we all just got these applications just a couple of days ago, basically, what we're going to do is we're going to be looking at these applications and making a, not a score sheet, but we're, we're going to see where these guys would like to go. We're going to see if they're eligible. And we're going to put something down in writing so that by January the 5th, we're going to assign spots? Is that when we're planning on assigning spots, the first meeting in January?
Yes.
So, we need to do our homework before then, obviously, then. So, so some kind of, some kind of scorecard where we try to play, if they're eligible and they seem to be a good fit, we try to place them where they want, first of all, of course, right? And then if that doesn't fit, then we'll try to work them somewhere else. Is that, we're going to have something in writing each council member?
We haven't, we haven't done it that way before, Mayor. But, I mean, that's an idea, right? Go ahead, Tom.
Typically, we just list every committee like this. And number one, we do it as the last agenda item, so that nobody has to sit through it. We have more time. But we'll just, the last couple of years, we've just listed just like this in no particular order. And then we'll read off how many vacancies and, but you're right, council at that point, ideally, will have a cheat sheet ready to say who's who. I think that the challenge for y'all is that, as we've done in the past, I can sign up for three different committees if I want. So, I think council's always tried, if we couldn't get you your first choice, we'd try to fit you in. So, frankly, there's a give and take as the council's sitting here, trying to make those appointments to fill up the seat. So, I think you're right that it's best if everybody has their own list. At the same time, that doesn't mean, I mean, in the past, we've kind of made calls right on the, at the moment, depending on, on everybody's viewpoint. And because it's, you know, frankly, it's, we tried to make this uniform so we weren't doing another board every month and do them all at once. But, but yeah, it takes a little time to make all the pieces of the puzzle fit.
Are we all comfortable with that?
So, we're saying that we're going to submit in writing our choices for these boards?
Well, I don't know if we're going to, I don't think we're going to submit them in writing anymore. I think we're just going to have them.
So, like we've done it before? Okay.
It really is kind of hard to line them up before the meeting, just based on collating everybody's, because, well, as you know, different people have different input kind of on the spot and trying to find the best spot. So, it really is kind of a little bit of a negotiation right at the, at the meeting. This is the way it's happened the last couple of years, since we've gone to this uniform appointment date. But yes, it'll help the whole process if everybody comes with their ideas already in mind. Okay?
Yes.
Were you done with that? Go ahead. I think generally, she tries to just get them to you as she gets them. Would you rather her keep them all till the 30th and send them then? Or do you want to get them as they come in?
I guess it depends on the number of them. I mean, the one-offs tend to get a bit. It's hard to see it in the grand context with like the original update list. I almost wish we had a database, and I know we don't have that. It's a joke. But it gets to be to where it's a bit heady because you have potentially so many folks. And I think that's where we've been caught in the past, just the sheer number and trying to understand not only who's who, but what's what. So, I mean, ultimately, whatever works for Amelia is convenient for her, but
Well, maybe we'll just do something like hold on to them until we get five and then
I think it's good for us to see the applications and we can kind of go through and see what they say. But it seems to me that last year, Amelia was kind enough to, you know, go through and say, okay, this is the board. These are the people that are going, are incumbents that want to serve, that leaves four spaces. These are the people that have listed this board as their first choice. These are the people that have listed it as their second choice. And then that way, we have that list, that small subset of people to look at for each board as they, as they come along. And then we can, that way, that was very helpful.
We can try to do something.
She's already done that now. It's just that we don't have all the applications. And that's the whole reason. She, if you look at on the agenda, the item, she says, Board of Adjustments, these three people, they would all like to be reappointed, but we have these other two applicants who have applied that show interest. So, so that was my original question. We have that here, but we're not going to have the full list until after the deadline.
Did everybody get the two that Amelia left for you, the two additions?
So, we'll just, we'll make sure we revise that list and get it out to you with the packet for the meeting on the 5th. Okay. Next item, Department reports. And then I just have a couple of items. I was going to have Amy. We talked about this before. Just update you on a couple.
I have a question on the Department report.
Go ahead. Nope.
Pam, Pam, we had 17 vacancies in November? I mean, the report shows 17 vacancies in November.
We wouldn't have had that.
Is that like new hires that we haven't hired, or? Was it a typo and there's only seven?
Yeah, 17 sounds too many.
That'd be 20% of our work, I guess, just about.
We'll, we'll take a look at that and revise it and get it back to you. Any other questions on the Department report? I asked Amy to come to, we mentioned at our last meeting that we didn't have our presentation working, that we were really excited that we had got notified that we got a half-million-dollar sidewalk grant improvement project approved. The council has kind of seen this before, but we just wanted to talk about it a little bit, to share the good news. And I know we actually talked about this before the mayor came on. So, we just want to quickly review what we're anticipating with great excitement.
All right. So, this is a project through the Texas Department of Agriculture. The overall program, it's a community development block grant funds that they disperse through the Texas Capital Fund Main Street program. So, your project has to be in your historic district. And in our case, we compete with other Texas Main Street cities when we apply for the, for these projects. And so, this creates connectivity within the historic district. If we start on Main Street at Central Avenue, there would be new sidewalk built along the parking lot of the Chamber of Commerce to Avenue C. And then Karts will be under construction in January. They'll be doing their own sidewalk work with their development that we'll connect to.
Sorry, Amy.
That's okay.
I was trying to get closer.
And then we would continue sidewalk all the way down Central to Avenue A. And, and you'd see that we would go up both Avenue B and Avenue A to connect to Depot Street. And then you do a block on Depot Street from Avenue B to Avenue C. And then the final piece would be on Avenue C from the corner of Depot Street to, again, the new sidewalk that'll be part of the Karts development. And so, the overall project connects the downtown district to the police department, the new Karts facility, and implements the sidewalks that are part of the overall sustainable places, downtown Union Pacific property redevelopment that was recommended in probably 2013, 14. So, it's those plans that have been on the books that we've been working towards. So, you'll be able to get within the district. It connects to a lot of existing sidewalk in the district. It's a $500,000 project. On our part, we have a $75,000 match, and it's $450,000 worth of construction. I have a typo in my email. Math doesn't work in my head. Or maybe it does. But it's our $75,000 match for the project. So, and it is exciting. This is, there's a, this is a lot of missing sidewalk in the district that'll really connect the neighborhoods around the downtown to all the various services and so on in the business district.
And then we were going to just update you on the other two projects we are in the process of, of getting underway. But in each one of these cases, it's important to keep in mind that the state and TexasDOT is the source of funding. So, the time you get the letter approving it and the time you're walking on the sidewalk can take some time, but they're underway.
Yes, it's absolutely the case. So, with the new project that I just told you about, we'll get, we expect a contract from the Department of Agriculture in February. And then we would, we'll build our timeline moving forward from there, once we are officially under contract with them. For this project, this is a transportation enhancements grant through the Texas Department of Transportation. And here, the red pieces on your map are missing sidewalk and/or ADA accessibility ramps connecting existing sidewalk in the Martin Luther King Boulevard, Booker T. Washington Elementary School, Thomas Park neighborhood, just to throw out the landmarks. And so, it starts on South Main Street on Alamo and connects to the blue existing sidewalks, fills in a missing piece that accesses Booker T. Washington Elementary School. There's a large missing piece on MLK that would connect to the new Maple Lane Sierra Apartments. And then missing pieces continue on Alamo to connect to Thomas Park. So, that project is technically a Safe Routes to School project. It just, they renamed things periodically. It just, they, they rename things periodically, and so this time they called that a transportation enhancement. And this is a project that does not have a match requirement. This is 100% funded through the Department of Transportation, other than if there were potential overruns. And so that's a $362,683 project. Now, for this one, we have our AFA from Tech stocks. That's our contract as a starting point, and we expect after the first of the year to line out a solid timeline, working with them for how the next steps will go. The TRC has already been selected as the engineering firm for this project, and Grant Works is the administration firm helping us with this one.
And one more?
And there's one more. And so in this project, this one is actually all work that will be done by the Texas Department of Transportation, and it's called an on-system project. So we actually included this in the Safe Routes to School project that I just explained when we originally applied for that grant, and the Department of Transportation pulled this piece out because they could fund it from a different source, and so of course that would allow them to do more other projects with the transportation enhancement dollars. So this will be missing pieces of sidewalk on North Main Street from Lexington to 11th, and it, you have a lot of ADA ramps that got put in two-ish years ago, maybe three now, and so this will connect existing sidewalk, existing accessibility ramps, and will create a continuous route from 11th to Lexington, which then connects to existing sidewalk throughout your district, new sidewalk on the south end of the district, new sidewalk at Booker T. Washington Elementary School. When we finish these three projects with the support of Department of Transportation in particular here, you will truly be able to walk from the southeast side of our community to the furthest northwest side of the community on continuous paths.
That's excellent.
Thanks, Amy.
Amy, a quick question, I'm sorry. On this project here, of course, I'm particularly interested in this one, because I live right there, but on this one here, there's a lot of sidewalk that is buckled because of roots and that sort of thing, and Ms. Barker, Fallon Brooker, you know, shoulder on it and all that, so, are hip, and so are those things gonna be fixed?
It is, I mean, until we see the plans from Tech dot, I, you know, what I can say is that what we have talked about with them, and what the program is supposed to include, is replacing missing and broken sidewalk in that continuous area.
Good.
So it, it should, but obviously, when we see the plans, we'll, we'll know for sure what all they're gonna be including.
Yeah, I guess I would say yes to that question for us, that, that if they don't do it, we should do it. If, if we have individual sections that need to be repaired, that would be the time to do it. So the fact that the vast majority of this is being paid for with outside sources, I, I would assume the city won't have trouble prioritizing the funds to make all those repairs if we have to.
And I know when this project was done similarly, further down, that there were some trees that kind of, they had to go around or, you know, take some of the yard because of the trees, or a tree had to come down or something.
Right, when you're working in that existing neighborhood-built environment, there are a lot of things for the contractor and the plans to try to address, and certainly, you know, we do our best to preserve trees and make accommodations wherever we can. Sometimes a sprinkler system might be negatively impacted, we repair that, so try to keep things as whole or fixed as possible.
Okay, thanks, Amy. Appreciate the update. One more item, Mayor, I just wanted the chief to give a quick update on Blue Santa this year. We've, we've, obviously, like everybody else, everybody's, Blue Santa efforts have been compromised somewhat by COVID and created a different challenge for us, but, but we've taken a different approach, and we're getting a really strong response from the community, so I thought Chief would just fill you on that, make sure you don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Out there, aren't I? Guess not. So, early on, and I actually wanted to thank staff, the command staff especially, and a number of the sworn and non-sworn officers, because up until about a month and a half ago, we weren't really sure we were gonna have a Blue Santa. The neighboring police departments have changed significantly what they're doing, but we wanted to go a little bit further and still keep as much of it as we could possibly keep, and they came up with a plan that, that met all the requirements of the governor's restrictions and also councils and the counties as well. So we were able to implement that, and it's been probably the largest giving year that we've had, and I don't know if that's because everybody just wants to give, but it's been significantly higher this year, and the numbers are about the same. So far, we have provided for a total of 40 families, 29 inside the state limits of Elgin, and y'all know Sister Irene at the Elgin Open Door Mission Church? I think everybody does. Anyway, Sister Irene took all the requests we had that were in the county, instead of having us be able to provide for those or transfer them to the Sheriff's Department. She took all those on herself, and, and we gave as much as we could to help her, but she took care of all those herself as well, and for us to do that. So, again, 40 families, about 100 or so children. Last year, we had a little over 100 children that we were able to help, but we have still plenty of time ahead of us, I think. The main thing is we're not gonna turn anybody away, especially this year. So two dates that are important. This Friday is the delivery day from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, or 12 noon, and everybody's gonna meet in front of the police department, if you want to volunteer for that. It's a no-contact delivery, so we're notifying all the residents that will be at those locations between a certain amount of times on Friday. You'll simply pick up the packages, honk your horn, leave them on the curb, the people will come out, and then you'll wave and drive away. So if they're not there, then we're gonna bring them back to the PD, and we'll make arrangements for them that way. And then on Saturday morning, we're gonna have shop with a cop, it's one of my favorite things. We don't get to actually go shop with the kids this year, but what we're gonna do is we're gonna meet in Veterans Park at 10:00 AM with a photo op around 10:30, and the Juneteenth organization is, or they're giving gift cards. Charlotte Thomas is doing that, heading that up, and I think that's about it for that part of it. But Saturday's gonna be pretty short, but we wanted to spend time with the kids, get a photo op with them, make sure they got the extra gift cards they were, any questions?
Chief, did you say y'all are done taking donations, or we can still?
Oh, no, 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 no. We still have quite a bit coming.
Okay, so we can't still donate?
Please, yes, absolutely. We have three major donations still to pick up, so, and y'all saw my office before, it looks like Santa Claus just threw up in it right now. So, all the way around my office is full of toys.
So we still want to, still taking donations, still wanna identify kids to participate, so, so share that information.
So anybody that's left over, like I said, we're not gonna leave anybody behind. If we get a request for something, we're gonna go ahead and take care of it. And like I said, financially this year, I don't know what the numbers are gonna end up being, but clearly there was much more donated this year than is gonna go out, so.
Is it just toys, chief, or is it clothing, blankets?
It's, it's mainly toys and things that they would play with, and then we also give them gift cards from the police department.
Okay, so not, not so much clothing or blankets or anything like that?
No, it's all, it's all fun Christmas stuff.
Okay.
And it's age appropriate, and gender appropriate, I guess.
Thanks, chief.
All right, thank you.
Well, that's all of my report, Mayor.
Council, anybody have any questions or comments on what we talked about so far? Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. Do you want me to go ahead and read that Tom, or you wanna talk about it?
Yeah, I'll just talk a little bit. Mayor, this is, council may have noticed, we, with our agendas getting fuller, we've, we've tried this time to put a few items that we thought are pretty self-explanatory or standalone, more than we typically do on the consent agenda. But, so we can, we're, if any council member wanted to pull one of those items off for further discussion on new business, we can do that, or just one motion to approve the consent agenda as presented is sufficient.
Council?
David, there's some, there's some, I can't see it, but the little red items, I forget what that is, but those are scattered everywhere. I mean, how does that work? Not everywhere, but there's a couple of them scattered out here and there. It's a general commercial district, I guess. Like, there's one downtown, and then there's one out there on County Line Road, I guess. What are those?
Those are C2, usually if they're like a bright red color, those are C2 zoning. C3 is more like a darker color, and C1 is like a pinkish color. So the C. Most of those, the, the light, like for example, Long County Line Road, that little red strip of land that you can see right there is C2 zoned. Everything else that's next to that little, that little red strip is C3. That's, that's like more of our heavier commerc, the heaviest commercial zone. So, yes, thank you. Anything else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items one through five as presented. Who got the second? Okay, so Councilmember Braysher made the motion, seconded by Councilmember Gonzalez. Let's take a vote. Councilmember Braysher?
Braysher, yes.
Gonzalez, yes.
Ramirez, yes?
Vega, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Mayor, you there?
Benson, yes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
I got you.
The motion passes unanimously. Moving on, we go to new business, and the first item under new business is the election of the mayor pro tem by the city council. I, I looked up mayor pro tempere, which is Latin for temporary, temporary, but we know how important the mayor pro tem is. They are the mayor in the absence of the mayor, and, and legally act as the mayor in the absence of the, of the mayor. Do we have any discussion or any comments we want to talk about before we make any comments, or, yes?
Mayor, I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Okay.
As acting mayor pro tem, I've enjoyed serving in the role. I mean, it's really important. I think in the last couple of years, council has been able to really try to work together. You know, in the end, it's not really about one person, it's really about a team role, and I think for the most part, everyone has been very cooperative and tried to work together, and at least present some sort of unified front. My understanding is that Sue is seeking a nomination. Is that correct, in this particular case?
I haven't heard a nomination yet.
Because, you know, the mayor pro tem is not meant to be in the position for a long time, and so I'm certainly open to anyone who might want a nomination. My understanding is that, that there are some that would like to be nominated, and so certainly, if that's the case, I'm completely open to that. You know, if that's how you see it, and if that's what you'd like to see.
Thank you for your comments.
Sure.
Anybody else? Do we have a motion to nominate someone for mayor pro tem? Yes, force?
Mayor, I'd, first of all, like to say thank you, Council Vega, Mayor Pro Tem Vega, for your service, and going forward, I'd like to nominate Sue Braysher.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Dennis, seconded by Councilmember Gonzalez. Let's present it for a vote. Councilman Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Ramirez, yes.
Vega, yes.
Council, yes.
And the motion is approved unanimously. Mayor Pro Tem Braysher, congratulations. And I agree with Councilmember, with the other council members, thank you very much for your, for all the effort. Councilmember Vega. Okay, let's go to number two, and under new business, a resolution of the City of Elgin, Texas authorizing the mayor to execute the First Amendment to the Development and Consent Agreement with Clayton Properties Group, doing business as Braun Homes and the Altessa Municipal Utility District, and making certain findings related thereto.
Mr. Mayor, this item, actually, the next three items on the agenda all have to do with the Altessa mud and that project moving forward. Just to clarify for the record, Clayton Properties is the, the owner of record, doing businesses Braun Homes in, in Texas, and just to make it a little more confusing, they started out with the name Altessa, and for different reasons, decided to change the name of the development to Harvest Ridge, but by that time, they'd already done too many official documents with the name Altessa, so that's why we're, we're calling it Altessa. Our development agreement is, calls it Altessa, but the final product will be known as Harvest Ridge. This is the project here, get your bearings here on County Line Road, it's the big mud that, that we've been talking about for quite a while. This is the, a little more of a picture, but obviously, an old picture, because we've seen a whole lot more development happen at Pepper Grass and at, to the south here, and to cross the road at, at Homestead Development. The Harvest Ridge, Altessa Mud is planned for just under 1,200 single-family homes. This is the most recent concept plan that council's seen before. We've discussed, they've made a few slight changes, but this general layout is the same as what it's been in, from the beginning. With these three action items tonight, they, these are the only remaining official actions required from the city relative to our, our development agreement, that will allow them to move forward with actual construction, which currently, they're scheduled to start infrastructure construction at the end of January. I think everybody knows, in the development business, it's hard to project real specific timelines going forward, but they're anxious to get started. We'll start infrastructure at the end of January. If that goes as planned, then they'll start going with vertical houses in the fall, in the first phase. This is the latest concept drawing that, that they've provided to us, which depicts the planned entrance to Harvest Ridge. These are a few more features. This tower feature will be nice, I realized today, if you live in that house and get in that top window, you'll probably be able to watch the Elgin football games for free, because this faces the football field from there. And it's just another example of, of the impressive plans they have for the area. As you could see from the, from the concept plan, they certainly have significant challenges in dealing with the flood plain there in the middle, but they've got some neat ideas of how they're gonna incorporate that into making it a, a very nice development. I just wanted to mention that, that Harvest Ridge and the Altessa Mud is a big part, partner with us on, in a number of ways, but certainly on the County Line Widening Project that, Phase One, that, that we talked about at the last meeting. It's kind of, to the left there is, is the Pepper Grass Development, which is, its first plat was just approved by the city, and you should start to see home construction happen there, and then directly across the street there, adjacent to the high school campus, is, is. is Homestead, which is vast center construction. So, in the next six months, there'll be a lot of construction activity on both sides of the roads out there. Just wanted to remind folks that this is, we talked about this last time, but actually, the Harvest Ridge Development will be making the largest contribution to funding of improvements to County Line Road. Again, we, they won't write us that million and a half dollars right up front, but they'll make those contributions as each plat is filed. So, the first action item that's before you this evening is amendments to, detailed amendments to our development and consent agreement. The development and consent agreement that council had approved previously, obviously laid out the framework for the deal. And this is more of a, a more detailed specificity of exactly what parts of the mud won't adhere strictly to city code, and what parts, they'll actually exceed the code in some cases, but it just is, provides a more detailed framework of the agreement that, that we've already executed with them. And the city engineer and city attorney have spent, both spent a significant amount of time reviewing this agreement, as we did the original agreement, so we're confident about its content and ready to move forward. I did want to mention, Mayor, tonight Tyler Gatewood is sitting out here in the audience. He's the guy with the Braun Homes face covering on, you might guess, representing the developer. He's here to answer any, any specific questions about the development that we can't answer, so. Anybody have any questions for Tyler? Do you want me to talk through all three before you vote? Yeah. Okay. Well, the se- Did anybody have any questions for Tyler? Oh, he's going to be involved in the next- But he'll, he'll be here for the others, too. The second item on the agenda is the strategic partnership agreement. Council may remember, we did one of these with Brixton as well. This has to do with the, the issues related to development review and control by Travis County. We've talked about this before. If you can see on the line where County Line Road is, but that pink line represents exactly where the county line is. So, of course, County Line Road isn't on the county line. But it ends up being this, as you can see, the front section of the Altesa Mud is actually within Travis County's jurisdiction. Similar to our efforts relative to the Brixton Mud, we tried to work with officials, both the developer and city staff, work with Travis County to form more of a partnership agreement with them, like we have with Bastrop County, where through a development agreement like we have with Altesa, they would agree to allow the city to take over development review, control, building inspection, and all those things that specifically contemplated in our agreement. But we couldn't get, in either case, get Travis County to relinquish any control. In this case, in the Brixton case, the entire development's in Travis County, but what's particularly frustrating about this, as you can see here, is just that front section is in Travis County, yet their position was that they, they wanted to see and review the entire development. Would there be houses in that section? Yes. So, it's through the efforts of our, the mutual efforts of our legal counsel. As we said, I think this, this quote came directly at the bottom there from, from Altesa's team, that Braun team, that, that the Travis County review alone would likely add a year to the project. And all they're going to do is do the same reviews we're doing. So, through this strategic partnership agreement that's allowed under the state, it actually, the Altesa Mud is agreeing to a limited purpose annexation, where this agreement is that we'll annex the property, but annex it strictly for purposes of plan review and development control. So, it doesn't have any adverse effect on the development agreement we've already agreed upon. It won't impact the project in any way, other than putting it all under the City of Elgin's review control and allow the developer to move forward. So, this is a, an agreement that was requested by the developer for that reason, and we're full, in full agreement with that. So, this is connected to the development agreement as well. And then the final item is the wastewater agreement. This is, again, just a follow-up agreement to the development, the original development consent agreement, where the city made a commitment to provide wastewater services to the development. This agreement just takes the specifics of that relationship to a completely different level. I'd just say, in general, it's important to note with our muds, Altesa, the Harvest Ridge is, excuse me, just like every other mud that's constructed outside the city limits. There's a four-prong requirement in our, our approach, that, of course, the developer has to pay for all costs associated with constructing the interior wastewater collection system. They have to pay to make whatever connection, connecting line, and in this case, it's a fairly significant project. The cost to Altesa the mud to extend, to construct an interceptor line to connect to our system. The development will still pay impact fees per house as they build. And then the development also contemplates that the mud will eventually acquire reserve capacity in the wastewater treatment plant, so that we can say with confidence that even though it's a mud, and it's outside the city limits and accessing wastewater services through the city, every penny of the cost associated with that will be borne by the mud and the developer, and there'll be no cost to city residents or customers. So, those three items, as you can tell, are kind of interconnected, but they all represent kind of the final steps between the legal process and, and the Harvest Ridge project starting construction. Mayor, if I could, Bo, did you have anything in particular to get covered on? Okay. And Tyler, did you have anything you need to add?
Good job explaining those. I gather, even though they're related, we still have to make a motion on each individual one?
That's correct. We should vote on each one. Councilmembers, do you have any questions or comments on new business items two, three, or four? Start with item number two, then. I'll entertain a motion to approve item number two under new business as presented. Okay, moved by Councilmember Dennis, seconded by Councilmember Gonzalez. If we can take a vote, and Councilmember, if we can take a vote?
Dennis, yes.
Ramirez, yes?
Vega, yes.
You with us, Mayor?
Vega, yes. Benson, yes.
Okay, the motion passes un- All right, we got you. The motion passes unanimously. Let's go to item number three under new business. I'll entertain a motion to approve item number three as presented. Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember Brasher, seconded by Councilmember- Dennis. Mayor Pro Tem Brasher, we'll start with you. Ramirez, yes?
Vega, yes.
Benson, yes.
Okay. Passed unanimously. Let's go to number four under new business. I'll entertain a motion to approve item number four under new business as read.
Benson, yes.
Has anyone made the motion? Benson did. Okay, thank you. Okay. We have a motion made by Councilmember Benson, and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Brasher. Let's take a vote. Councilmember Benson, you're first.
Benson, yes.
Ramirez, yes?
Vega, yes.
Dennis, yes?
Okay, passes unanimously. Let's go to item number five under new business. A resolution of the City of Elgin, Texas, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with TRC engineers for professional engineering services related to the elevated water storage tank number two repaint project, and make, making certain findings related thereto. Thank you, Mayor. This item is a fairly routine item, but it's one that's fairly visible, and I know the mayor's received a call or two about it, and so we just want to make sure everybody was on the same page with this, how we're proceeding. We, our elevated water tower that number two is the one by or on the Elgin High School campus. We've had some problems with leaks. You may recall, we tried a little patching earlier in the year, but that didn't work. We've decided the correct approach is go forward with a complete resurfacing of the interior of that tower. This is a routine maintenance project that occurs with, with every water storage tank, every, particularly every elevated or metal storage tank. It has a special and expensive coating on the inside to protect, protect both the water and the, and the tank itself. These are projects that are done, useful life is, I said 20 years, Bo said 15, is that right, Bo? That, but based on our general recollection, this is, this particular tank has never had this type service. It's been, probably been there for 20 years, is what I would thought. So, we're probably past the useful life. It needs to be done. Takes some initial engineering, that's what this engagement is about, and then we'll be bidding the project. We think that it, by the time we get it bid and done, four to six months? No, I meant four to six months from today. No, I mean the project be done. Yeah, okay, that's what I meant. From today to have it done, because the point is, the tower is leaking. It is leaking some water. It leaks from the bottom. While it may sound confusing, but the overall assessment from staff is that frankly, the most cost-effective thing is to continue to monitor it, and as long as the leaks don't get any worse, it's kind of cheaper to absorb the cost for the water than to try to do any interim repairs. And so, we're trying to move forward. But it, it's not a major leak, but it's noticeable. That's why the mayor got a call, that's why I got a call about it. So, we just want to make sure everybody knew that we're, the plan is to move forward as quickly as we can, but, but the simple truth is, it's going to leak for a little while until we can get this done.
So, on the summary, thank you, both areas, is this time and materials optional? Does that mean we don't have to pay for those?
I like that. I hadn't thought about it that way, but it's a good idea.
Thank you. I was just wondering what the word optional meant.
I, I guess, I thought I heard it was a tradition that the mayor climbed up the tower to, to check on that stuff.
I, I think I know some prior mayors that may have done that.
So, just wanted to-
How do we monitor, Tom? How do we monitor? Do we send someone out there, like, on a weekly basis? Or how do we monitor to see that the leak hasn't gotten worse?
Well, that, Michael, you want to speak to that?
You say daily, Michael?
It's not daily, every other day.
Okay, okay. And I will say, it's like most things, that, you know, frankly, we depend on people to call us if they see something. So, we're not, part of why we want to talk about it today is so you'll know how to, y'all will know how to respond if you get a question. But if anybody thinks it's getting worse or something, they just need to let us know. But we'll, we make regular rounds to monitor all that equipment, but in this case, we're, we're keeping a special eye on it, and we'll be till we get the project done. No, I think that one we fixed.
At the main one?
Well, it's, it's, this is, truthfully, these are projects that, in the past, the city, again, when we didn't have a five-year plan, we haven't put these in and programmed them properly. This, Bo, what would you estimate, what's your estimate of the bid going to be on this?
On, on the tank number two, or we're talking about a different one?
No, just, this, this project. So, so obviously, these, the other towers, we need to get programmed in, because they are, these are projects that are going to need to be done every 15 to 20 years, as long as we have those towers. So, it is kind of going to be a reoccurring cost. And so, it's, obviously, that's a challenge to, to just have that jump up on you. So, in the future, we'll be trying to project these out with a better plan.
Okay, so this resolution is just to start the TRC engineering?
Correct. Correct.
Tank two, yes.
Just to get, basically, do the engineer and get the bids and specs ready so we can bid it. And then you said you think it'll be back with the bids in late January?
So, I'm just going to ask a real dumb question, Bo. We've done repairs on, on water towers before, correct? We, so why do we need engineering for it? Why not the company that's going to do the repairs?
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
No, on the second one, tank one will be following after.
Yes. It'll have to sooner or later, yeah. Okay, if there's no further questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to pass item number five under new business as presented. Okay, so the motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Brasher, and seconded by Councilmember Gonzalez. We'll take a vote.
Brasher, yes.
Ramirez, yes?
Vega, yes.
Benson, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Okay. Resolution passes unanimously. Let's go to item number six under new business. Discussion of possible direction of staff regarding the distribution of community nonprofit support funding as included in the fiscal year 2020, 2021 annual operating budget. Thank you, Mayor. This item is, as stated, an annual process. We go through, the council had set aside, approved, a set aside of $31,000 in the, the current year budget back in October. And we've taken requests from nonprofit groups, and this is the culmination of that. We received requests totaling $46,500. And, but we have the $31,000 pie to split up. We engaged a couple of members of council and asked them to help us rank and prioritize these projects. So, I took the results of those individual scoring sheets and input, and just kind of tried to do an average. And we came up with this scenario for funding, for how we would split up that 31,000. for how we would split up that $31,000. It ends up being that everybody, this year, everybody that applied is getting, under this scenario, would get a little bit of money. I just wanted to show you this spreadsheet that shows the, the city's history of, of sticking around this same general amount for the last, this will be the sixth year, there's five years per, per history here of the different groups that council has supported. And this initial plan scenario put together for this year, as you can see, kind of generally follows the same pattern as we've followed in recent years. Drive Senior, Children's Advocacy Center, CASA, and the Bastrop County Women's Center Advocacy Outreach have generally been the recipients of the top amount of the funds in, in each year, the last six, five years. We had the next three there are the, the new ones that, that first-time requests were made this year. As you get down to the list, I just want to mention from Karts and the Community Covered. Those are both organizations that previously the council provided funding through this mechanism to them. In the case of Karts, we mutually agreed with them that before they, that these donation, this donation was appropriate before, but now that they're making the investment of town, and the city is making a significant investment, has agreed to absorb the cost for extending utility services, and will have ongoing costs associated with our partnership with them, that it wouldn't be appropriate for them to continue to seek donations through this, through this scenario. And they've, they've agreed with that. In the case of the Community Covered, it was something very similar. We had previously made these donations to them each year. If you remember, earlier this year, we developed a new lease agreement with them, providing the building free of cost to the Community Covered. It was through that process that we discovered that the Community Covered, unlike the Chamber of Commerce or the Historic Association, the Community Covered was actually paying all their utility bills themselves. They were even paying a water bill to the city every, every month, which I was kind of surprised to find out. So we proposed to them that, similar to those other agreements, that we'd absorb the cost for utilities, and in exchange for that, they would no longer seek a donation from us. They quickly accepted that proposal, and it wasn't until later that they told me that their utility bills were about $3,500 a year. So they actually made out pretty good on this deal. So that's why those two have dropped off this year. And then the bottom three there are ones that the city had funded before, but for whatever reason, they didn't make a request this year. So obviously, it's up to council on how, how you want to divide up this money. But we, which is exactly why we asked for some help from, from council members. And so, so again, as I said, this, the split on the far right-hand column here, it was just a scenario I came up with by combining the feedback we got. But, but obviously, there's no magic in those specific numbers, and we can change them however council feels like. But this is not a budget amendment. It's simply council deciding how we're splitting up that pie.
Mayor, I'm okay with those numbers, and I did part of this scoring. I did have two questions when I was going through it. We've always supported Drive Senior, and it's a great program, but now they've moved into the corporate world, and it's called Drive Senior Central Texas. So my question and/or concern was, is it just now a big pool of money where all of Central Texas gets that money, or how much of that money is actually going to stay in Elgin? And I didn't find that answer. And I am a member of the Methodist Church, and our rules state on our nonprofits that we would not fund religious organizations. So I just wanted to make sure that we were still within our rules for that.
I kind of had, I mean, that too, because we've got, we've got probably 30 churches, and Elgin and all of them have a right to apply for aid. And I think we had said something about religious organizations in the past.
It's in the, in the, the written thing.
So that was the only concern I had about that one. The other ones, all of them have funding, like CASA and Bastrop County Women, they all have funding from outside of Bastrop County. They receive grants and stuff from Texas and stuff. So Drive Senior, yeah, I know what you said, that they went to Central Texas, joined a larger organization. And, you know, we can look into that and make sure that that money, and I'm sure it stays here. They use every bit of it. So that's something to look at.
We could still get that cleared up from them before we issued a check.
When, when is the actual issuance? Is it in January, or?
Whenever the council, yeah, all right. Typically, everybody, yeah, they, they're, seem to operate on similar fiscal years, so they always kind of want it the first year or want to know if they're getting funding. So if we're not getting calls yet, I'm sure we'll start getting calls wanting to know. But, but there's no magic date for it.
I'm okay with this breakdown. Just the only thing is, the one where it states in writing about religious organizations, I just want to make sure we're following the rules.
And so do you still need an answer to your Drive Senior question?
I would like to know.
Yes.
I mean, like I said, it's a great program, but I would like to know now that they've gone broad, or how much actually stays here.
Well, we can, council can authorize this, and, and we can proceed to get those questions answered, conditioned upon those, before those two payments are made, or, or we can table this item now and bring it back next month, if, if you'd rather have those answers first.
You have any comments, council?
I'll, I'll, you know, I asked this one here, but maybe with the caveat that for now, no more religious organizations, because-
Well, don't we have to find out first?
I would, before I check his issue. Because if it's in the rules, then it's in the rules.
Yeah, I guess I'm not sure what rules you're talking about.
She has sent a sheet that had-
Oh, in the, in the application rules. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, Ms. Penson.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah. Well, my, my, I didn't know how to put it on the, the screen like Juan and Sue. I'm sorry. But I have, my suggestions is the same as Juan, except I was giving Drive Senior $3,000, and the, the community aid program, the, the United Methodist, First United Methodist Community Aid Program filed pass, because it's not the actual church that's doing, it's just going through the church. It's the, a community aid program, because they actually do pay the communities utilities and, you know, buy groceries and gas for them to get somewhere. And they don't, they, they do give small amounts of cash if, you know, for gas or something. That's like $20 or something. But what they do, their program is, is just helping all these different families in need. And this, they showed all of that in their paperwork. I know it, I know it's a church, you know, First United Methodist Church name first, but it is a community aid program. Really giving it to the church, church. And it is all Elgin community. That's what I had to say.
Counsel, I would ask, are, are we ready to, to make these decisions? Or, and, and I know that we don't want to hold off on these payments when, when, when we can make them. But are we ready to do it now? Or are we ready to?
Mayor, I, I think I prefer to have clarity on these two before we, I hate to send something out and with there being questions there. So if we could get that and do that at our first meeting.
So we can address this next month, then?
I'd like to table this until that time.
I, I hear a motion to table this resolution until January. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Dennis to table new, new business item number six until January, seconded by Mayor Protem Brasher. Go for a vote.
Dennis, yes.
Brasher, yes.
Amidis, yes.
Beggar, yes.
Benson, yes.
And if I could, may I just clarify, it's just the two questions, right, the-
Is that all, is that all we, we're clarifying?
Drive Senior, are they, I, I know the point. It was council tried to change a while back to focus on Elgin organizations that are helping Elgin folks. So it's more that question, right? Or we don't, the money just gets stowed in a little big pot that serves other people. We might have a different idea about it. And then the other part is just clear, clarification about what the rules are.
Yeah, there's a prohibition on churches. We need to-
Okay, all right, we can do that. Well, if you have any other questions or think about them in the meantime, just let Mayor Amelia know, and we'll follow up on those as well.
Going on to item number seven under new business, and ordinance setting the time and place of the regular monthly meetings of the City Council of the City of Elgin, Texas, providing findings of fact and providing for a savings clause. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is an annual requirement of the city charter, where the council is required to schedule at least one regular meeting each month. And so that's what we, by ordinance, and so that's what we've put together. We followed the first Tuesday of the month schedule. But when you project out the schedule, it, for 2021 calendar, that we, there's three conflicts there. In March, the first Tuesday is the second, and, but that's a city holiday and Texas Independence Day. So we set that meeting for March 9th. In October, traditionally, the, I would hope by next year, we're going to have, be back to National Night Out. And that always happens, the first Tuesday of October. So we've put that one down on the schedules, October 12th. And then again, in November, Election Day is the first Tuesday. So we've scheduled that for November 9th. Now, this obviously doesn't mean these, these aren't the only meetings we'll have, and I certainly anticipate that with the activity that continues to grow with us, that most meetings, most months, we'll be having two meetings, the second and, and then the, the third, the first and third Tuesdays. We'll probably try to stick to that pattern. But, but this meets the technical requirement of the charter to stipulate this schedule.
Okay. That makes sense. Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, I entertain a motion to approve item number seven as presented.
Second, Penson.
Okay, the motion has been made by Councilmember Gonzalez and seconded by Councilmember Penson. We'll go for a vote. Amidis, yes?
Beggar, yes.
Penson, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Brasher, yes.
Motion passes unanimously. At this time, I want to adjourn the regular scheduled meeting to go into executive session. It's 8:43 PM. Councilmembers, I think we're going to go into this other room.
All right.
Councilmembers, you take a five-minute break, do whatever, do whatever you need to do, and then we'll meet in the, what do you call it, library room, or what do you call it?
Yeah, we got, well-
Library meeting room?
We'll carry you back there.
Okay.
We'll carry you back there.
Okay.